Whenever you're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Good evening, everyone. Going to call to order the Town of Lake Clark Shores Town Council meeting for May 10th, 2022. Mary can have a roll call, please.
Mayor Paul Schalhoo.
President.
Vice Mayor Robert Schalhoo.
Yeah.
President Proton Gregory Frubel.
Yep.
Councilmember Bautine Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Gonzalez.
Here.
All right. Mary, is Pastor Hunter there to do the invocation?
Yes, he is.
Ready. My Father in heaven, we come to you tonight, and I, again, I thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight, to be able to pray and open this meeting. And I thank you for these men and women in our community that still see the need inviting God in on our situations, Lord, and our problems, whatever our needs are. Again, Lord, I thank you for these men and women. I thank you, Lord, that we can ask tonight that you would give them wisdom. Lord, I'd ask that you give them vision. I ask, Lord, that you give them whatever they need, passion, compassion. Lord, may there be great unity among them tonight. Lord, we don't always agree, but when we disagree, may we disagree with the sweet spirit. God, again, I thank you for these leaders. Thank you for this great community, and, Lord, they're doing their best to make it even a greater community, and I can say nothing but thanks for that. Thank you for their time. Thank you for their sacrifice. Thank you for their families. I pray your richest blessing upon them. Lord, I thank you. We live in a safe place. I thank you, Lord, for our police department tonight. Thank you for the chief and his men, Lord, and just all that they put their lives on the line all the time. We thank you for them. So, God, thank you for allowing us to live in America. Thank you for allowing us to live in this place, and I appreciate it so much, and I just want to say thank you tonight in Jesus's name. Amen.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one inch under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice as a whole.
Pastor Hunter, thank you very much. Your words are always beautiful and welcomed here. Well, as y'all know, I'm appearing virtually, so I appreciate you indulging me in this regard. I'm out of town and put to Gorda on a trial, and I was not able to make it there to be with you all up on the dais personally. But hopefully, everything will go just as smooth and as best as can be despite me appearing remotely. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Excuse me, gentlemen.
Oh, that's one order. We need to add.
Want me to do it?
Please.
You're too quick on the gun, Mayor. I'd like to add an additional item for approving the agenda for the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Union presentation under paragraph numeral four.
Second. It was seconded.
All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, with regard to the consent agenda, I want to note, as I told Mary earlier, there was a typo in the minutes contained in our packet, in particular, page nine of nine, second to last paragraph of section number 11. The word does not need to be included in between the word "he" and "make." So it reads, "He also noted that he does not make his decisions based on what affects him personally." If anybody can make a motion for me to amend the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Is your second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. So moves on to the presentations. We do have the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Union rep, if they could please come up. Want to thank them very much. Let them know that we are very appreciative of their donation towards our town barbecue in the years past, including this year, where the amount was in $3,500. So thank you very much for your support and your generosity, and I look forward to hearing your presentation.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us. The IFF local 2928, which is the Palm Beach County firefighters and paramedics, we've had a long partnership with Lake Clark Shores. Obviously, we've been, as firefighters, serving this community for over three decades. So the union has always tried to be a good partner, and we'd like to continue that this year. We're sad that the last couple of years, things had to change because of COVID, but it looks like we're finally on the mend. So on behalf of the professional firefighters and paramedics of Palm Beach County Local 2928, we'd like to present you with this gigantic check for $4,500.
How about all of the council coming down for a photo opportunity?
Our sign guy got a little excited.
I think that's fantastic.
I feel like we've won the lottery.
Probably not.
Where do you want us?
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We truly appreciate all that you all have done and continue to do for our town. We don't have any quasi judicial proceedings or public hearing. We do have some unfinished business to discuss, starting with the discussion regarding the speed hump policy. This came up over the last couple of meetings, and I know, I'm sure, most of us have had some discussions with Dan. I recommend that we ask Dan to continue to reevaluate the policy that was created a while ago, as well as basically to see if there's a better route to go and put up some speed signs in the area where our residents are saying that they have some speeding concerns, so that we can actually see, you know, take some data, if you will, and see what the speeding issues are in that area, if any. Would any of the councilmen like to discuss this topic?
Um, hey, Paul. It's Val Rodriguez. When we brought this up to, when this was mentioned to us at the last meeting, I was sort of taken back how easy it is to get a speed bump. And I don't think everyone understands that there's concerns with speed bumps as well. I mean, fire rescue who are here tonight probably will be the first to tell you that they don't like speed bumps because it slows down their ability to get to a residence quickly, and also it does things to their trucks. I mean, knocks all the equipment up and down, which, you know, is a major problem. Also, this is a problem with the policy, in my opinion. It only required, how many houses? Twelve? Twelve houses, Dan?
Sixteen out of nineteen, I believe.
Okay. In an area that was affected, but quite frankly, there's a thousand houses affected by that road, because there's probably a thousand residents that use that road to go south. So I think that policy doesn't make a lot of sense on a main road like Waterway, excuse me, like, yeah, like, yeah, Westlake and Pine Tree. I think it's, I think we need to rescind the policy and have any further requests come to council, or at least maybe get on a consent agenda after they're brought to the town manager, and he can discuss it with council members. That's just my opinion of what I think we should do.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I briefly did a quick search here on my computer, and there's several different alternatives for speed bumps. Some as simple as painted optical illusions on the road. They also have suggested road narrowing, and what I mean by road narrowing is they put almost little curbs on either side of the road. There's no bump, but it does give the optical illusion that the road has some sort of an obstruction. I'm not saying that those are things that we would consider, but I'm saying it for the purposes of let's look into alternatives, and I think that that needs to be part of the discussion. There are, there's a difference between a speed bump, a speed hump, a speed table, and a speed cushion, all of those which we can discuss if we want to. But, you know, certainly speeding in the neighborhood. We've got a lot of pedestrian traffic. We've got dogs. We've got kids. So maybe it might be the case where we can look to these alternatives or maybe utilize it as an opportunity to market in, you know, small, very elegant signs that we do utilize our roadway. I know that years ago, we put up share the roadway signs. They were very, very nice, but I think that maybe some more of those may be a good idea to remind residents or travelers that are visiting our neighborhood that we do utilize our roadways to recreate.
Can I add one thing, Mr. Gonzalez, is that Sal, our Assistant Police Chief, at the last meeting said that he would discuss with us some of the statistics about whether we actually have speeding there, and I thought maybe we could ask Sal, if, Mayor, if that's okay with you, could we ask Sal to offer the information he's gathered?
Yeah, absolutely. I was just going to hear from the rest of the council. So President Proton Frubel, do you have any comments?
Well, Pine Tree's already loaded with them, so we wish there weren't so many, but it should be a little more reflective of the community. I think it's a low number. So, you know, there's a lot of people out there, Mr. Mayor, walking dogs, sometimes three and four apart, bikes. So I know nobody's going to like to hear what I have to say here now, but sometimes enforcement of the speed limit is necessary without warnings.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Schalhoo.
You know, it's a, you have to reach a happy median, and safety of our residents is the most important thing, and we need to do whatever we can to ensure that their safety is number one. I think education with regard to how fast you're going. I think there are two, correct me if I'm wrong. I know there's one on Westlake, and there's one on Pine Tree where when you drive by, it tells you exactly how fast you're going and flashes red. You're speeding, this, that, and the other. I think that that is, should be looked into. Does that have the capability of recording how many? I thought I saw some averages of the speed going through there and how many cars go through there. So I think that should probably be the first step in determining the traffic and then the volume, not only the volume of the traffic, but the speed, because sometimes, you know, perception is reality. But I think we owe it to everyone to make sure that those numbers are in fact accurate. We have a speed trailer that records the number going back and forth. Am I correct, Chief?
We do. With due technology, these speed signs do flash when you go over, and they do record, and it gives you, I think I discussed that one council meeting where Monday through Sunday, so you get an idea of what day, what time, and like, a lot of times, people think there's more speeding in the morning, but it's more in the afternoon, and that's where we direct the officers to do traffic enforcement. But there's, the percentages have been 90% compliance, 90%, and then, of course, you have the other 10%. So then you have to figure out if it was a police vehicle that wanted to call fire rescue and so forth. That will give you an idea, sir.
I think there's also a study that's been done that speed humps do not deter speeding, and for whatever reason, that's sticking in my mind somewhere, that there's a research that has been done there. So if you can find it, Mr. Clark, or the chief, and share it with council and put this issue on the next agenda for further discussion. Give everyone an opportunity for 30 days to see what those numbers are. Put the speed trailer out there and find out what the speed is.
Thank you. Assistant Chief.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Assistant Chief, can you advise us what you found pursuant to your investigation of this issue?
Yes. At the request of Councilman Rodriguez from last meeting, I pulled up the stats for both Westlake and Pine Tree. The data compiled was activity which occurred during March 28th and April 26th. It was just a random 28 days. Using the four speed signs, we have just two each on Westlake and Pine Tree, both north and south ends of the roadways. They recorded the following. Pine Tree Lane had a total of 47,494 vehicles, travel at an average speed of 21 miles an hour. Westlake Drive had a total of 53,948 vehicles, travel at an average of 21 miles an hour. I checked the rush hour, you know, peak times. There were no spikes in both roadways. So this is a combined total of 101,442 vehicles, traveling at an average speed of 21 miles an hour, which is four miles an hour slower than the posted speed. There were a couple of cars that drove fast in the speed limit, five cars between 35 and 40 during that span. Five cars have 47,494 is not a very alarming figure. Now, we've done this months prior. The chief has done this, and we've come up with similar totals every time. That being said, that does not indicate we have a speeding problem on the roadways. If I had any suggestion, it would be to put more speed limit signs. So, you know, you do the ones that flash. You put them in front of the ones, the people that are complaining, you put them in front of their houses. That usually isn't what they want to hear. But we really don't have a speeding issue. We have posted officers on the roadways and undercover vehicles. We have that there as well. Sergeant Howell has clocked 60 cars, all at an average of 25 and under. So I know from the living room, if you're watching a car from a short, you know, window, you see it go by, you really don't know how fast it's going. And it's not to say that we did clock some cars going fast, but most of the residents are pretty compliant.
Well, I have.
Those four signs that we have are much better than the speed trailers. They already exist. They're already planted. You don't have to drag them around.
I think enforcement is a very key issue, and I know that a lot of the residents want to see more enforcement. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
We had any issued on the surface streets here? Has there been any tickets issued?
Oh, yeah, I don't have them here.
No, I don't. Just say yes or no, question. Yeah, okay. Okay, good.
But you also have an average of over 3,000 cars a day.
Yeah.
That traverse those two main arteries.
In light of the Assistant Chief's report, does any council member have additional comments to add? Councilman Rodriguez?
No, I don't. Thank you. Well, I just, I, maybe I'll make a motion that we rescind the current policy regarding the procedure regarding allowing speed humps or bumps to be placed in town and request that those requests for such speed bumps come to the town council for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's have a discussion. Anyone want to have a discussion on this motion?
What do you think about a moratorium until we get the statistics in front of us? See what those, the speed trailers show us and the volume. Let's put a moratorium on it.
Well, I wanted, the reason I wanted to rescind it was because I think there's some end of, in the hopper, and.
Putting a moratorium on it, just debate everything, because now the issue's now going to come in the talking to our neighbors, okay? There, you know, you had the husband sign the petition and the wife saying, are you nuts? And then you had the wife sign the petition for the speed, and the husband says, I'm calling Schalhoo if I want a divorce.
Well, that's good business.
So I think that we have to have a happy medium. That's all I'm saying. You know, what are you going to do about the one that we just spent $7,000 on, on Westlake? Which, by the way, all speed bumps have come to council for approval. You approve that one?
I don't remember approving it.
Consent agenda item. But with regard to Councilman Rodriguez's point and Vice Mayor Schalhoo's, you know, if we're going to rescind a policy, if that's the end game here, I do think it would be worthwhile to see if, what type of policy would we put back in place, if any? And I just want to discuss that with you, Councilman Rodriguez. Are you suggesting that there is no replacement policy? It's just a matter of if we rescind the current policy, any future requests just come to the council, and there's no quote-unquote "policy" to be reviewed or compared to or analyzed to see if, you know, meets the elements type of a thing? Is that what you're going for, or would you just like to see this current policy out and a new policy in?
Well, we could do either or. The problem with the, the problem with our policy right now is that it just, it's overbroad. It doesn't allow us to take into consideration the fact that where the speed bump that was put in recently affects probably 1,000 people as opposed to just 16 homes. And I think it's hard to come up with a policy to cover all the different variables that we're discussing, like, like, how many speed bumps do we have? Every time that a request comes, we could get some input from the police department. I don't know how we would come up with a policy other than saying that it should just come to the council for discussion every time there's a request, because then that gives us the freedom to, outside the limits of a policy, it gives us the freedom to just discuss the necessity of it. But Vice Mayor Schalhoo's idea is okay as well. I mean, we could just do a moratorium until we come up with a better idea.
In that regard, I honestly, Councilman Rodriguez, I agree with you. The moratorium, to me, if it was going to be 30 days, I think it's better to be 60. And we have a lot going on in the next week in particular, as well as some other competing priorities. I think it'd be good to give staff the additional time to see if they have any additional recommendations. Give Dan a moment to come up with the recommendations, give the police department some additional time to put all their data together and see, you know, what really our options are to better determine if we want to just fully rescind it or if we want to replace the policy. What are your thoughts on that?
What do you think about a motion to table? If I make the motion, it gets a second. There's no discussion, but then just have that come back by, staff will put it back on after they get the necessary backup documentation.
I don't have a problem with that, but doesn't that create a problem with current pending applications?
Yes. I think we need to either rescind it or stay.
Mr. Mayor, I would support either, either moratorium, and I think I'm in alignment with you folks. The real issue with the current policy, outside of the obvious, that it doesn't take into consideration everyone that traverses the road, there's also the impact of first responders' time and going over those humps. But even aside from that, I think that by having residents able to petition the placement of a speed bump, if we now extrapolate this years and years into the future, I think we're going to run into a real big issue with the design of our community. And so I think that by giving us a reprieve of 60 or 90 days, that we'll now have an opportunity to look at the design of our neighborhood as a whole and to see even if our neighborhood can support any additional or fewer speed bumps. So I would support a moratorium for 60 or 90 days.
Mr. Clark, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Once the speed pumps, bumps, tables, whatever you want to call them, are in, you can't take them out, correct?
Sure, you can grind them out.
You can? Okay, just making sure.
We, when we pay those.
And can we also grind down some of the other ones that are higher than this one? Does this, the other ones appear to be higher than this particular one?
You are the town council. You can do whatever you want to do, as long as three of you agree.
And Mr. Rodriguez, to your point, I think that that goes along with having an overall cohesive design for our neighborhood, having a patchwork of various different speed bumps all throughout the neighborhood, I don't think is.
Right. I mean, because I think they're different heights right now. Is that correct?
No. They're different designs, and so they feel different. We've standardized on four inches on all of them. The old style created a lot of problems because some cars drag on the bottom of them. So we went with the tables because they allow a longer ramp up, and then they hold the height long enough for the back tires to get up on there before the front ones come off. So it's more, it's less disruptive to lower cars, but it's the same height.
So this is a table designed, the new one that was put in?
Correct.
And all the other ones were just kind of the humps? Okay. It sounds like we need to do some revisions to everything. But I will rescind my motion, and am I allowed to rescind the motion?
I think if the second agrees.
Yes.
Okay, I'll rescind that motion, and then I'll move, I'll move for a moratorium of 90 days on this policy until we have staff input.
And just to be clear, that motion also includes a hold on the two pending requests by a group of residents?
That does, yes. The moratorium would include just absolutely no, no staff work or approvals or any work under the policy until, for 90 days.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any further discussion on that topic before we move on by the council? All right, moving on to unfinished business, section B. This is the ongoing septic sewer discussion. So just want to have a few comments here, but really, actually, we'll just start with Councilman Rodriguez and then work our way through the council. If you have any comments on the status or issues going on related to the septic sewer conversion.
Well, we've had several citizens give us input and questions over the last month. I've asked Mr. Clark to pull together information from two other projects that I personally know of. One was Belvedere Homes, which was a CRA project of about 830 homes, I believe, in Belvedere Homes in the year 2012. And then I asked him to also pull information from Jupiter Inlet Colony, which was a real small amount of homes. That project was mandated and sort of by the Locksahatchu River District, and I talked to some town officials there to try to figure out how they came up with their policy. And then Mr. Clark also informed me of how the governor has, you know, allowed or signed or approved monies for other projects in the county relating to sewers, but our town has not received similar grants. So I'm of the opinion, we still need, we still need to talk about this more, but in the last month, what I learned is there's definitely the need for the project to go forward, because I'm convinced on two levels. One is the need is there for ecological reasons, environmental reasons that directly relate to our lake and just directly relate to the quality of our town. And I think, you know, it's about time we move into the 21st century. I've done a lot of research on septic tanks and why they exist, and pretty much, I mean, they existed because, and a long time ago, we didn't have the infrastructure to build sewer systems, and now we do. But I'm still got a lot of questions about financing and things of that nature. I think we do need to iron all that out, because I think all the residents have great concerns about financing, as well as myself, who would have to pay for it. Ironically, I believe all five council members are affected by this. We are in the 700 homes that would be affected, and I believe two of us, Mr. Schalhoo and myself, are in the first phase. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
My staff as well.
The mayor?
Oh, oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, Paul. That's right. You live right across. So three of us would have to, would be affected. So three of us would have to, would, would be affected by this even more. It's not going to be a fun project if you drive up and down Florida Mango every day, you see what they're doing there and what a, what a pain it is to get through. It's not going to be fun for anyone financially, having dirt in front of your house all day long, trying to get in and out of your house. But the, the people I've talked to, for example, in Jupiter Inlet Colony, they all agreed that their house values majorly increased by virtue of that town having sewer system in there. And they, they believe that, you know, it, for every dollar they spent, they, they got $3 extra in value to their houses. And I think that's what's going to happen here. I think we're going to see our property value shoot up quite a bit once people can say, we have, you know, you have a, you have a sewer system connected to your house, which is a much safer, cleaner way of dealing with things. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. And you, you, you brought up a good point with regard to financing and that ties into something that Dan Clark look in, looked into for us and went back with Larson Consulting in light of the last meeting, one of our residents came up and, and talked about municipal bonds. And they basically came back and did an evaluation, or Dan did an evaluation and ran it by multiple consultants for the state revolving fund option, the bank loan, or a municipal bond option for financing. And prepared a memorandum, which I know is in all of our packets, and the same document was posted on various social media sites to the town, as well as on the local residence page, basically showing that the state revolving fund, which is the current course that the town has recommended and are currently pursuing, is the most affordable option for financing as municipal bonds, which was suggested is significantly more expensive. I'll touch on that a little bit more, but I agree, it's certainly a big issue, Mr. Rodriguez, that I'm happy that our town continues to look into. Councilman, sorry, President Proton Freeball.
Well, I've been going around talking to the people because we've received all the lists of everybody who has concerns. And I've been going around and talking to the people, asking them what they think, how they feel. It's in comparison to the amount of people that are affected, it's a short list. We had a fishing tournament this weekend, and of course, we're talking to biologists, looking at fish and doing all these kinds of things, talking about the water. A lot of the anglers who came here, most of them are not from Lake Clark Shores, were shocked to find out that we were still on septic tanks. So it's a work in progress. As I said before, my youngest daughter, who is an environmental engineer, told me two years ago that we're on DEP's radar for an impaired body of water. I think that the lake is what drives Lake Clark Shores. It's something that needs maintenance, maintaining. It's not just septic to sewer. There's a variety of other projects that are going to be coming down that need to be addressed also. So we continue to look at every angle, every option, everything that's out there and continue to move forward and study it.
Thank you, Councilman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, I look at the project and, and just focusing on cost, I have a three-year-old, he'll be three in July, and I have one on the way. And I, I look at the cost. I can send my file to college for Florida Bright Futures. And then I think to myself, what does this decision have for our community? And, and as a community, how are we now responding to the need as residents? And, you know, whether, whether you've been here for one year or 40 years, we know that we're, we're all on, on borrowed time and we get to enjoy this neighborhood. We get to be the good stewards of this neighborhood. You know, since 1957, this, and, and talking to folks, and there's a wonderful, wonderful history of Lake Clark Shores on the website. If you guys get about 30 minutes, it's a good read. And, and going back into the history of Lake Clark Shores and how everybody was very harmonious, and this was the sticks. Back many, many years ago, it was not necessarily easy to, to get to. And, and the reason why I say that, and the reason why I focus on it, is because of the fact that, you know, to, to your point, Mr. Rodriguez, the, or Mr. Freeball, the infrastructure just wasn't there. And so now we've had a lot of time, and, and I know in the last council meeting, we had a resident that posed a very precarious question. And he, he asked, he says, well, if the septic tanks have been here for so long, why is it now all of a sudden that we're having a problem? I thought to myself, I said, wow, that's, that's interesting. And so now, if you look at the soil and if you look at, you know, how long some of these systems have been in place, it takes time for some of those nutrients to trickle down. And so in thinking about the, the big picture here, you know, 30,000-foot view, we got to look to see that we're the end of a chain that emanates where the lake starts or where the agricultural starts, and, and we're the last kind of link. And so in discussing this, there are lots of different areas where we can get pollution. But we as a community have the opportunity now to make a decision and to tell everybody else, say, look, they've been pointing the finger at Lake Clark Shores for a long time, regardless of where the pollution comes from. I think that independently, we need to make a decision from today forward and what's in the best interest of our community. And I really do feel that that is absolutely taking care of treating our sewage. And in my research, I, I looked at different alternatives. And the alternatives are just as expensive, if not more expensive, than the traditional sewer system. And I'll, I'll explain that a little bit. There's actually a special type of a septic tank that removes nitrogen. It's a little, I don't exactly know how it works, but I've read some of the literature where scientists kind of go on and the engineers. It takes off, it skims off some of the, what's in the tank, puts it in a different tank and treats it so that you're not leaching a lot of the nitrogen and phosphorus and chemicals into this drain field. And those systems are about 20 to 30, 30-something thousand dollars. So with that being said, I really do think that it's time for us to really look at this. And, and at the end of the day, it is financing. I started, you know, this, this discussion, looking and thinking about my kids. And, and I think that we do need to look at the financing of how we're going to make this thing happen. And, and I do want to point out, Dan has been very hard at work. I know that in our packets, he's actually applied for what's called 319 funds as well, in addition to the SRF, the state revolving fund. So I want to applaud Dan on his monumental efforts to try to look for, for funds for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Shalhoub.
I wanted to make sure everybody appreciated the fact that in the week of April 29th, that's when we submitted the grant applications to the Palm Beach County and to FERDAP for the SWAG grant and to Florida Department of Environmental Protection for your 319 H grant. We also submitted our annual report to the United States Treasury for the ARPA funds. So every dollar that we know that is available out there for this project, we are making applications for it. You should also appreciate the fact that of the, the $130 million bond issued that Palm Beach County or county commissioners are contemplating, there's $6.5 million that are available for the septic to sewer conversion. We have been in contact with the Palm Beach County leaders for months, going back almost after over a year. They know about us. When I mentioned it to one lately, one representative, he looked at me and smiled. And then basically, he just started providing me with the litany of, of bullet points. So they know where we are. And that $6.5 million has to be spread. I believe he said there were six, am I right? Six areas or six municipalities?
Six other impaired water bodies.
That are going to receive some of these dollars. So they know where we stand in this situation. And I just wanted you to know that the dollars that are available now for the septic to sewer conversion may not be and probably will not be available next year or the year after. So if we don't do something now, we're going to lose out on that opportunity to reduce the, the financial impact to all of us. Two words have been banded about. I want to make sure you all understand what shovel-ready means. It's a, it's a unique term of art, but the, as we understand it, the septic tanks, whether or not you agree with it or not, septic tanks contribute to the waterway pollution. It's the driving force behind the state's push to address this contamination. Each year, Tallahassee moves closer to requiring conversion to sewers. I draw your attention to Senate Bill 712, which became law in 2020. When that mandate comes, towns that have not planned ahead will lose millions of dollars in potential funding. The reason comes down to two words, shovel-ready. It's a project ready to begin. It requires plans to be finished and permits to be approved. Only shovel-ready projects that could happen. They only fund projects that are happening. For the last several years, we have been requesting dollars to assist in offsetting the cost for permitting and planning of the septic to sewer issues in Lake Clark Shores. I want to say $900,000 we've received over the years for our permitting. Or am I getting confused?
Just 300,000.
Just 300. So those dollars that we receive are used to offset all of the, the, the final cost. So somebody reached out to me and said, did you see the post on social media about bonds? Somebody did a pencil and paper calculation that disagreed with our consultants. I think that's great. I'm glad there's a disagreement that it's going to fuel conversation. And the more you talk about it, the more information we have available to make a decision. But I just want you to know that we're doing everything we can to make sure that the financial impact is, is lessened to all of us. All of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. On that note, you're, you're correct, there was a gentleman, a resident, a neighbor, Mr. Tony Sacco. He came up with his own calculations. I don't know if he's in the gallery in the, in the meeting today or attending remotely, but I am told I'll be seeing him on Sunday at the town barbecue. So I look forward to speaking with him about his calculations and see if we can get a meeting between him and, and Larson Consulting so that Larson can explain to him the memo that we received and was reviewed by them and approved by them. It's important to note, all who have seen this memo or want to see them, is that this is not based on our project. This is just math done for a similar cost of project, right? So this doesn't reflect what it's going to cost the town residents, you know, for either funding method. It's, it's basically an analysis of what do each of these funding methods look like? So that we, as a town, the town council can make a decision on what, which option we should choose. And again, as it stands right now, the SRF loan route certainly appears to be the best, best route at this time. But hopefully Minister Soko, Sacco and our consultants can get together and talk numbers and have some fun in that regard and, you know, see if there's a better way to go about it. All right. Any additional comments from the council before we move on to base, which would be audience comments? All right. All right, we're now moving on to audience comments as there's no new business. So let's start with those who are in attendance today. Welcome, thank you all again for, for being here and coming to our meeting. If anybody would like to go ahead and up to the podium, address, state your name and address, let us know what you're thinking.
Mr. Mayor, I have a public comment by Ashok Kolharney. Please, Mr. Kolharney, come on. And before you get going, everybody should appreciate the fact that the septic to sewer item on the agenda will be on each and every agenda going forward. Okay, so it's not going to be a flash in the, what do they call it, a flash in the pan? It's going to be on every agenda moving forward. Am I correct, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Ashok Kolharney, 8131, Westlake 5. Okay, you live in Lake Clark Shores, not West Palm Beach.
Well, no, actually, both all address West Palm Beach, I understand what you're saying.
What's your, what's your two questions?
Okay, and they're brief. See, since we are talking about humps and the bumps, this is, my question is about the Westlake Drive. I'm very much impressed, there is a resurfacing going on and portion is already done with a black top, okay? And the yellow double line in the center is nice, that is good also. All I'm just thinking at that little strip between Gregory Road and Age Water Drive is not extended to Waterway Drive. I live in that area and it is just a small strip. It's not extended, and my question is why?
I'm not sure I understand the question, what's not extended?
Black top finish, the resurfacing of the Lake Clark, Westlake Drive.
It's on the, on the plan for next year.
Just a little strip, huh? Why is that?
We, we have a plan that we're implementing the plan, so it'll be covered next year. We can't afford to just go out and do everything all at once. We don't have that kind of money. So as we get the money in, we're spending the money. So next year, that, that piece is on the schedule next.
No, that is okay. No, I just puzzled because it's not a long, whatever is done is long enough. Some portion is not covered because of the septic and source. And that's why, where I stay, we are still with Palm Beach water and I was just puzzled and it's not a long strip. But what you're saying is it's going to happen next, next year.
It's about $106,000 a mile to pave our roads. So that's, that's on the next.
The next quick question is.
All right, what's your next question?
Don't you think we consider ourselves United States the most advanced country in the world? Am I correct?
That's your opinion?
I'm just wondering.
Well, you just want to know, do we? I'm not going to disagree with you.
Okay, good.
But I don't think you're asking me the question.
No, but then I raise this because you remember that we have been discussing the main door of our town hall is closed because of security of council hall. In my opinion, any locksmith and carpenter should be able to lock this door in a couple of days or in a week. Why, and isn't it true that council members and the staff, they have got the key to enter in? Am I correct?
I don't have a key, but Mr. Clark can.
Am I correct?
I have a key.
I don't have a key.
That means what, all I'm just saying is that when you run for the election, you are elected by all the residents, right? And you're supposed to work for the residents and you do wonderful job. But here, you have the key, the staff have the key, and there is not a good idea to have that main door closed. Now we are talking about more than two months and it's still closed and I'm wondering why? I mean, it's a matter of having this door closed or even I mentioned, one can have this polystyrene will get in between and it can be done. So I'm really puzzled why it is something like that and it is going to go on forever?
Dan, didn't, last meeting, we were on a 60-day plan, is that still in place as that leaves about 30 more days to have these, the upgrades done so we can reopen the town hall?
It might be a little sooner than that. The contractor is telling me he's two weeks out on getting the key set.
So anyway, this is going to happen very soon, I hope, right?
When, when supply show up, when materials show up.
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ashok. Anybody else? Do we have any other submitted?
Yes, you have to come on up here, come on, you're okay.
I'm Adrian Rossi and I.
Excuse me, one more time, repeat.
Adrian Rossi, I lived in Venetian Way.
They're wonderful.
And I did petition for the speed bump. And I'm sorry I missed the beginning of that, but I guess my question is, it was all in the works, ready to go from my understanding. So is that no longer going to happen? So is that no longer going to happen? We have probably almost fifty percent of the houses on that no outlet street with children. And it's continuing to blossom.
So right now. What took place with regard to earlier on that agenda item is there was essentially a moratorium place. So there will be no installation of speed bumps over the next, was it sixty days or ninety days, Val?
Ninety.
Ninety.
Ninety days while we wait for additional input from the town as well as the the police department.
Can I ask what additional information I mean, not to be?
Sure, I'll let Mr. Rodriguez handle that. It was his motion.
Yeah, so basically, we're the problem is we're trying to determine how to best look at the overall amount of speed bumps or humps or speed tables in the town, conformity, number of people affected. Other factors that we think are important that we discussed earlier, you weren't here, but there were a bunch of different discussions. I mean, one of the issues is is there actually a speed problem where you want it at? And if there is, then the police, we want to give the police department an opportunity to verify that because they brought up statistics showing that there was been no speeding problems in the town for a while. So it would be a variety of factors like that that we're going to look to. It's not we're not saying we're not. All we did was we voted for moratorium for ninety days. We're not saying there will be no more speed tables in town. We're just saying we want we want to have more of a say as a council as to the criteria for them.
That just happened within the last like month or so because, I mean, as far as I know, the engineers came and it was ready. Is that something?
Yes, it it came up at our last council. We all discussed it as being an issue because one was installed, which we apparently approved on our consent agenda.
Right.
Over here, and it does affect a lot more people than just the sixteen homes in the area.
So I just feel like it affects a lot of children. Does that get taken into consideration?
I'm certainly I'm certain it will.
Okay.
You know?
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Well, I'm not a resident, so I would let the residents go first.
Okay, well, you don't have to have a resident to come to the meeting and say, hi, how are you? Tell us who you are.
I couldn't be better. Mr. Mayor, Town Council, staff and residents of the town of Lake Clark shores. My name is Paulette Burdick and I'm a former elected official. And I want to thank you for your service because I know that it is not always easy to please everyone. And I particularly want to acknowledge your town. Mr. Clark, Mr. Clark? For his diligence, his tenacity on working on your behalf to getting this funding for the water projects. I was in Tallahassee and I watched him. He did a wonderful job. He's done a wonderful job at the county. And I have to tell, I'm going to talk to the residents because I think it's the residents' opportunity here. This year, Florida Tax Watch reported that there was two hundred and eighteen million dollars utilized in what they call turkeys. Yes, the county has identified six bodies of water and you all have advocated, staff has advocated and done a great job. But I also know that your town is heavily Republican. And I think it's an opportunity for your residents to get on the phone to the governor's office and say, and Florida Watch, Florida Tax Watch has a list of all the turkeys that they have identified. Those are projects that are not necessary for the public welfare of our state. In Palm Beach County, and you are all not the only ones that are dealing with these water quality issues. And I think water quality, there's nothing more important for the our children and raising them for the future. And let him know, identify those turkeys and ask him to veto that and put it into those water resource funds that everybody needs. Well, that's enough for my soapbox. What I'm really here for tonight is to respectfully ask that you consider the policy that you have for your police officers on no discretion. Earlier this year, I was coming west on Forest Hill because going east in the morning is impossible because of the school hours that's there. I'm coming east and I and then going to go through the community to get to the lake to Sunset Park in Lake Worth. So as I'm coming, I'm trying to make that left hand turn onto Pine Tree. The cars have just oh, they were blocking the box like often they do. And then there was an opening. So I started to proceed and make my left hand turn very cautiously because I know our intersections and our highway are extremely dangerous. I'm making that turn and the car had stopped and the second car in the second lane had stopped, but that third lane was the question because they were flying down to get onto the onto the ninety five. So I'm I'm making that and I'm stopped and the cars east of the intersection started to move. So because I'm retired and I'm not in a hurry to go anywhere, I backed up to let the working people proceed and go to work. Well, made that that turn and one of your police officers. I was obstructing traffic and I got a ticket. And he told me that he had no discretion. So why I'm asking you all to I don't know if tonight's the best night to ask, give your police officers discretion with because it's a speeding issue. But I'm asking that you consider giving them that discretion because I thought I was not only being considerate because I'm retired, but also eliminating a safety issue in that intersection. So thank you very much for your time and for your service, and I wish you all the best of luck. Good evening.
Well, thank you for all your service.
Absolutely.
Really. Thank you very much.
I served sixteen glorious years on the school board and then ten at the county commission. And I think there's nothing more important than being a school board member. I know you all have been always very supportive of the schools in the area. So thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, nice.
Man, would you like to come up?
Short public service announcement about that exact scenario. That's actually a very common scenario for people to be involved in car accidents. I can't say what you did was right or wrong, but obviously just be careful. If you're presented with that situation, you got two vehicles, you got three lanes, two of them have stopped for you. It's that third one that always gets you. My brother in law was actually involved in a crash in that exact, a very similar scenario. So be careful.
So we have another resident ready to come up to the podium?
Just tell us your name and address.
You're probably not going to want to know my name. My name is Louise Brandonberg and I live at eighteen ninety Carissa Road. You've all received an email from me, Mr. Clark, council members. I'm here to ask a question. Has the city or the town come up with a new affidavit for home based business that reflects Florida statutes? And do we have a new criteria for home based businesses? I listened last month when you swore to uphold the law. I listened to talks about safety. I have three cargo trailers coming and going constantly. That's a safety issue. This business does not have a county occupational license. To my knowledge, does not have a town occupational license. It's now four months. We have codes that could possibly curtail some of this since we're not going to enforce Florida statute. I don't understand. I don't understand under section one twenty five dash seven, six, seven, four trailers. A utility trailers, more than one utility trailers. Why is that not being enforced? Why is someone allowed to have three cargo trailers with signage on it? That's all I'm going to say. I'm very disappointed. There's a safety issue on Carissa Road. There's Florida statutes not being obeyed.
Ms. Brandonberg, please wait a second. If I was there in person, you and I would be having a lengthy discussion after the meeting with our town attorney. I do encourage you to stick around. We do have some additional information in that regard, as you and I previously discussed. And the town attorney has evaluated the statute. So if you could hang around after the meeting to to talk with him and Mr. Clark. I think that would be very beneficial. And I wish I could be there to sit down with you all and have that discussion. But we have made some progress. Mr. Scheck has looked into those issues and he does have an opinion. I just haven't been able to.
That's all I've asked for all along is a yes or no, is something being done? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. In the back with the white hat. Yes, sir. You can come on up.
He's he's here.
Okay.
You can't see it and we have Mr. Tim Daughtry approaching and distributing a picture of what looks to be the town parking lot.
Okay, Timothy Daughtry, fourteen ten Keller Road. That's a picture of eight SUVs in the town parking lot, okay? Do we need all these SUVs and what is the cost to our town? Okay, it's really getting way up there, okay? And that's a concern to me. And it's concerned to me that the town manager replaced his vehicle, which he's entitled to do. But my the projection was quoted to me was seven hundred and sixty one dollars a month. That's without insurance, that's without gas. I've looked at car allowances for the leadership of municipalities in the area. And this is way, way, way up there, okay? And it's it's concerned, we're talking about dollars, we're talking about costs, we're talking about financing septic to sewers. We need to get control of the costs. That's the first thing. And then back to the septic to sewers, okay? We had a projection, we had a proposal, actually a report from an engineer about Michael West. Okay, it didn't have the water line replacement in it. And I've yet to see what water line replacement in that project would cost under what was originally done. When are we going to see the plans for Michael West? Okay, that was ten weeks ago or something like that. When are we going to actually see plans and costs? Okay, I buy pipe every day, I buy wire every day, I buy electrical equipment every day. Just got a notice today, fifteen percent increase this month in gear, which is panels, breakers, whatever, okay? That's gone up thirty three percent since the first this year. I'm I'm saying to you right now that the cost of this project are really getting very, very, very high. And it's something that we need to put a pause on. Okay, I'm not saying the plans, I'm not saying the plans, I'm not saying the permitting. But the actual construction of this project is going to get quickly out of sight. All you got to do is look at, go to the grocery store, all you got to do is buy gas. You know what the cost of this is going to be extremely high. And it continues, continues, continues to get higher and higher and higher and higher. We've got to look at this very careful, carefully from a cost standpoint. For someone who's raising a new family, it's a big deal. You've got college costs to stare at, okay? People who are retirees on fixed incomes. This is a big, big, big dollar figure from house to house. I'm not saying this project shouldn't from an environmental standpoint go forward. I'm a big supporter of sewers, okay? I've lived on sewers and I've lived on septic tanks. I far prefer living on sewers. The problem is the cost and how we're going to finance it. Financing is never going to take place properly until we have plans. I support plans, really good, solid plans that we can bid out. But at the same time, we're not going to get money from the feds, the state, the county. It's really clear to me that we're not going to get that money unless we have plans. And so I I wholeheartedly say, continue on with the plans. Get shovel ready projects, okay? I I agree with that. I totally agree with that. But then we got to make the next step, which is how we're going to finance this. Because this is a lot of money and it's going to be a huge amount of money for our members of this town who are on fixed incomes. And I really submit and I continue to submit, it's going to be well above their ability to pay for this project. But that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you.
Come on up. Say your name.
Howard Goldfarb seventy one fifty Westlake.
Welcome, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. I'm here about two years now and just learning about, you know, what's going on. Perfect segue to, you know, the last speaker. From all the numbers that I've seen, it looks like you guys are considering half of the project and not what any of the individual homeowners are going to have to incur to get this project completed. So from what I've been told, it doesn't include what you guys have presented so far, does not include bringing the sewer to the individual home or the removal of the septic tanks or a number of other issues like re creating the driveways for everybody that are circular driveways that get ripped up for the new sewer pipes. So are you guys going to include that in the financing of what you're looking to do? Or is that just going to be on the homeowner? Because from what I've been told, it's in the neighborhood of over twenty thousand dollars per home on top of whatever the new monthly financing is going to be.
Well, Mr. Clark, can you answer that question before I chime in?
I'm sorry, Paul, what were you speaking to me?
Yeah, I said, can you answer that question that I was going to chime in afterwards?
I I was trying to respond to a lady online, so I'm sorry I missed the question if you wouldn't mind repeating it.
Each individual homeowner is going to have, from what I've been told, over twenty thousand dollars of additional expenses on top of what the financing has been looked at so far to include the sewer pipe from the house to the street, the removal of the existing septic tanks and the repair and replacement of the driveways on everybody's individual home. And that's not included in any of these proposals.
And that's not a number we have ever heard or could corroborate. One, you don't need to remove your septic tank. You can punch a hole in the bottom of your septic tank and fill it with dirt and leave it where it is, and that's perfectly fine. The only reason you would have to take it out is if you're planning an expansion in that area, it's not suitable for foundation material. So it can stay there, it doesn't have to come out. The numbers that we're being told by EPA are five thousand dollars a home. To to do, to make the connection and abandon the septic tank. We're also applying, as was stated earlier, for three nineteen H money, which is a forty sixty matching grant with the feds that will pay sixty percent of that five thousand dollars.
Driveways?
Drive if if we if we take out a driveway as part of the roadway construction, we'll replace it as part of the roadway construction. If you have to take out that driveway as part of making your connection, I don't think that's factored into the five thousand, but I don't know that for sure. And I don't know what that cost would be.
Then one other question for maybe the town attorney. Whether you like to hear it or not, there's, you know, discussion out there of if the going from sewer septic to sewer doesn't change the water quality whatsoever. Are the cities liable for all the money that everybody's going to have to pay?
No, the city would not be liable. That does not invoke a liability on the city. The the fact that the lake may still be impaired would would not change the responsibility for the costs.
If the city requires residents to come forward with all this money and it doesn't change what's being done, is there a study that's been done to show where the coming from, whether it's coming from the water from Lake Worth every night or any other place? The fertilizer that comes off the lawn?
There's lots of studies that have been done, but you you may be under the misconception that that the town wants to do this. The town is being. The town is being forced to do this by DEP. So we either do it now, excuse me, but you have the, the response from DEP that says that exactly. So we can volunteer to do it now and do it ahead of their dictate, or we can wait for their dictate and do it when they, when they come beating on our door. They say, and we agree, it's cheaper for us to do it now. They also are targeting septic tanks all over the state. So septic tanks will be their first target. If, if we wait for that TMDL to be created and that BMAP to be created, they'll come in and dictate septic tanks will be done. So we can do it now and take advantage of the public money that's available and try and do this as soon as we can. Or we can let the lake get worse and let DEP come in and do their TMDL and BMAP, and then have a bigger challenge to clean up and the possibility of no public money.
So it's based on your documentation that the septic tanks are causing this pollution problem?
Yes. We, we have a four, we have a four E plan that says that the septic tanks are the, the most appropriate way to go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark.
I have their study.
Any other?
Do we have any other council, sorry, audience comments?
Also, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could you just ask residents not to interrupt other conversations when Mr. Clark is talking?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You know, everyone's going to be given an opportunity here in the meeting, attending virtually or in person to speak. So if you have any comments regarding what is being discussed, please hold your comments and be respectful to the speaker who is coming up to present their comments, as well as the council and staff while they're addressing those concerns.
Please state your name and address.
Jennifer Chenowski, seventy-one thirty Pine Tree Lane. So I think what the last gentleman might have been asking you, Dan, was if there's a study that's been done on Lake Clark that's showing the impairments being caused by septic tanks.
There is not.
There is not, just so we're clear. And then when you're saying the DEP is mandating that the town of Lake Clark Shores be responsible for cleaning the impairment in the, in the lake, there's not a mandate from the DEP mandating that, is that correct?
No, that's not correct, that's not the way I read it at all. In fact, the questions that you ask of DEP and the responses you got from DEP are pretty clear. We do it now as voluntary, or we do it when they tell us to. But there is no option, and you asked this specifically, there is no do-nothing option.
No, if we were to do nothing was the question, and that would mean that they would do the TMDL study, which would show you the nutrients that were allowable in the lake, like daily maximum loads. And that would take place, and then what would follow was the BMAP. They said it would likely bring us to the same solution of septic, but they did not in any way say that we were required or mandated. What they did say was if a TMDL was completed, that they would assess, they, what they said to me, like almost verbatim was, there is not an actual formula, but let's say, for example, MS four permit holder for stormwater handling was seventy-five percent found to be responsible, stormwater polluting the lake, that that entity would be seventy-five percent responsible for the fiscal responsibility of the project to clean the lake. So if, like, for example, Palm Beach County is the largest municipal MS four permit holder, they would be that responsibility. And they did, they even, they even suggested that this town council, town staff, reach out to Palm Beach County and, and, and form a plan with them before committing to do something here. That doesn't mean that anyone here has to do that, but they made different suggestions other than what you're saying publicly, which other residents are listening to. There is no real man, there is no mandate from them.
I think what you're missing, Jennifer, in all of this is the basin map. The basin map identifies areas served by us and others.
The watershed area?
That, that then.
Watered area map, because we don't have.
No.
You gotta, you gotta miss out. Mr. Clark to respond.
I didn't think I was interrupting, I'm sorry, I was just trying to clarify.
The Lake Clark Basin map, which is in the four E plan, which DEP has looked at and approved.
Okay.
Helps identify areas and responsibilities. Now, on its own, it does not provide the complete picture because it does not identify those areas already sewed. And those have to be taken out of the picture. So when you look at the areas already sewed, what's being proposed in the four E plan is, in my opinion, as an engineer with forty-eight years' experience in water, wastewater, and stormwater, it's a pretty good deal for Lake Clark Shores residents. Because we don't know what else is out there, and we don't know how bad it can get. And we're making a commitment to a significant investment, but it can be way worse.
Yeah, but no one will know that without the TMDL.
You're right.
But we were told specifically, verbatim from the DEP, without a TMDL, no rulemaking can take place. The DEP has no authority to tell the town to do anything. So it, it's hard to hear you say that we're being mandated when it's in writing saying that it has to have, there has to be first completed a study. That's why I think myself and many other residents don't understand why the town is so hell-bent on skipping the study and going straight to negotiating the alternative restoration plan.
So the whole idea of public money now versus public money then, you don't think is a legitimate reason to move forward?
I don't, and you're saying that now, but under what basis? That inflation's going to stay at the same rate it is, continue to skyrocket? Maybe this is the worst time to do a project like this. Maybe in four years, all the prices would be less, like, no one could say that unless we had a crystal ball and we knew for certain.
We can say that in night, in two thousand and three, it would have cost us nine thousand dollars to do this.
Our home, okay. That's really meaningless compared to what, you know, I don't know what the value of the dollar was then versus now, maybe it's equivalent. It's hard to sit in the audience and listen to you say that there's a mandate, because there isn't a mandate. There's no rulemaking that's taking place, and there's no authority the DEP has over us right now. Right now, that, that four E that we submitted, and they're probably going to approve, it's all voluntary. You guys voluntarily solicited them, you guys voluntarily asked for help on this draft plan that you submitted to them. They gave you comments, I have all the information.
We're being proactive.
Really work, that we're, you guys, you know, vote for us, I understand you represent us. That's something that you guys, I don't know if you're saying Dan's keeping your breath to it, everyone's on the same page, fine. But everyone's making that decision without any input from the residents and expecting us to foot this very large bill, which includes roads being paved, which I have a huge problem with, because we should not be paying for the roads to be paved. But, I mean, I keep saying my piece, so, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you before. But it's not being mandated, you agree, right?
No.
You don't agree?
I don't.
You disagree?
I do.
What does have a difference of opinion there, Ms. Chenowski, thank you. Any other audience comments?
Come on, Claudine.
Well, I'm going to come with something softer.
Okay.
Claude Investor, six-nine oh four Venetian Way. Sorry. I noticed a couple of weeks ago that there are a couple of homes on Forest Hill who've been painted white and where the, there are plants that have been put in. I hope those people are going to receive the Home of the Month. Do you see which homes I mean?
I don't know which ones you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm talking.
Do you know, or Dan, do you know?
No, no, when you, when you drive from Mango, then Florida Mango, then you take Forest Hill. And then you have a little street that goes to.
That's Carissa.
That street.
Okay.
On that corner.
Okay, so people, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. People have painted their homes white, but.
It's, it was nice or before.
Oh, and now it's nice?
Yes.
Did they also do some landscaping?
And they did a bit, yeah. It, it was, it was really not nice for Lake Clark Shores. When you, I mean, when we're talking to improve visually, but apparently nobody, nobody noticed that, only me.
I noticed.
Yes.
Is it not much nicer?
Voila, so I.
I think we agree with you.
I, I think they may have the, the, the Home of the Month.
Homes of the Month.
Homes, yeah. Then, I'm sorry, I'm going to talk about maybe the Lake Clark Cleaning Event. I was thinking maybe that could be extended, because not everybody lives on the water. And I think it would be maybe an opportunity to do that for the total of Lake Clark Shores.
There's another one in September, Claudine.
Well, somebody may be waking up very early for something that I usually doesn't do before my coffee.
But you were there.
And there is coffee provided.
Well, anyway, and anyway, I did also Venetian Way. It's not on the lake, well, it was worth to do it. And I think by doing this, for, for the total of Lake Clark Shores and kind of dividing, you know, geographically Lake Clark Shores in parts, maybe even there can be done a contest to improve people, to keep their streets and stuff like that nice. And it's not, I think the people who live there that always make messy things, you see that, oh yeah, what I want to say, maybe it will involve more people with on the boat also to work on that project. And maybe make, make signs for boaters, delivery companies, garners, et cetera. Maybe this, this will invite them to respect the area of Lake Clark Shores in total. And I say in total because you really can see a difference between all the areas and the area between the lake and here. Pine Tree Lane, and everything is much neater here, I mean, the trees are bigger, la-la-la-la-la, much greener, cleaner. So I, I, I would, I would try to involve entire Lake Clark Shores to go that way and involve more people to, to do and respect that. I mean, it's not normal that you see people just throwing cans out, plastic bottles out, all the empty packets of cigarettes you see, that ends up in the lake also. It blows all over, I mean, I mean, I think.
Let's not forget, we're going to be doing this again in September.
Well, yeah, but that's why I say maybe something we can think further and, and involve more people.
Are you suggesting that it'd be more of a cleanup of the community, not just the.
Yeah, because was cleaned up during the lake, that's really the short place around the lake. But the other people, not, it's a community. So involve everybody, because there are people over there that have boats and they come to the lake, I mean, I think you should involve everybody.
Thank you.
I appreciate that idea, I think it's something worth looking into. Maybe we could send people who don't want to go in the water to walk the, the main streets and side streets of Lake Clark and collect garbage in that fashion as well. Thank you, Claudine.
Well, that's what I did with my dog, I mean, there is nothing wrong, I did the park and.
Well, you know, we just appointed you, Mr. Mayor. Claudine, we just appointed you tonight to the Parks and, and Recreation Advisory Committee. Meeting that you have.
Oh, thank you, but when are the meetings, meetings going to start again, because?
I'll let you talk with Mr. Clark about that, but.
I see no meetings.
You tonight.
Mr. Shaw, is that a motion?
No, it's done, you did it already, done and ordered.
Yeah, it was in the consent agenda. She was reappointed, she, she's been a member of the Parks and Rec Committee. She helped get the project together for the grant for the pickleball courts. Anybody else in the audience this evening that wants to come up?
Good, come on.
This one?
Ann Warren is making her way up.
Slowly. Ann Warren, seventy-five twenty-four inch water circle. You all put in a poop bag dispenser, now put in a, a receptacle to contain the whole dog.
They, they installed one.
On Brick Road.
Only bags, no, no receptacle?
Nope, no receptacle. The bags of poop were thrown all around on the floor, on the grass.
If I catch the person that comes down my, my street to put the poop bags in my empty trash can, that's not a nice neighborly thing.
Well, maybe they should take their poop and take it home with them.
Leaving it there for all others to have to see. You know, there'll be six or eight sacks, individual sacks filled with dog poop. So get a container.
Okay.
For the bags.
There you go, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
I would tell you what type of situation that is, but I don't think the word is appropriate.
Thank you, Miss Warren. There was, there was a gentleman in the back.
Mr. Joe.
Joe, block six-six-one-one Pine Tree Circle.
Welcome.
So I have a question about the memorandum that was just put out this past week about the comparison of the financial for funding. And the very last paragraph in that memorandum, it, it, you know, I, I'm no expert on the subject, and I just, you know, I, I started thinking about it, and it talks about, you know, liens on properties and tax rules in the county. And I'm wondering, is, you know, the money that might come from residents to pay and fund the project, on paper, is that money gonna still look like it's coming from residents? Or because it's involved with the county and the tax rule and liens is on paper, is that money going to look like it's coming from the county?
The loans that the town takes will, will pay for the construction. The debt service is what will be collected from the residents to pay off that loan. And it will show that it's coming from the residents, but it will be collected through the Tax Collector's Office.
So the, the county won't be the funding source for the project?
No.
For, for that one, okay. Okay, and then the other thing was, I was looking, you know, just in the state of Florida, other communities that might have gone through something similar to what we're going through with the septic to sewer. And there's a, an area in Orange County, I can't remember the name of it right now, but I can find it and I can send you guys the link. A smaller number of homes, I think it was maybe around two hundred homes, where the cost was per home initially was going to be fifty thousand dollars. And just like what's happening here, the residents were, you know, not happy and were very vocal about it. And the county commissioners there, they actually got the cost down to six thousand dollars per home. And so my, you know, question is, and you don't need to answer me now, but definitely think about it, would the council, like, come up with a number that seems acceptable to homeowners? And target that number as what's payable per homeowner? So to me, you know, paying six thousand dollars per homeowner is a lot easier to swallow than paying twenty to twenty-five thousand per homeowner. per homeowner is a lot easier to swallow than paying twenty to twenty-five thousand per homeowner. So.
Additional information.
Is that neighborhood Wiki Wa?
It is.
Wiki Wa.
Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roblock.
Google, Mr. Shaw.
Are there any other comments? Yes, sir. Please come up.
Ariel Hernandez, fourteen oh one, Karan's Circle. I just want to know what was the search term that you used to find that?
Thank you.
Orange County Septic the Sewer. It is the one, two, three, four, fifth. I know that most people don't go five down on the searches, but it's the fifth one down. It's a Orange County Government of Florida newsroom article, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. It says, "Orange County awarded millions for septic conversion and upgrades." But I haven't read the article, but I understand that it looks like the funds are coming from the county, which would be, you know, Palm Beach County awarding Lake Clark Shores in this scenario. Hasn't happened. We are asking and beating down their door.
Well, thank you for entertaining me. That was just for dramatic effect. Thank you to the staff and the town of Lake Clark Shores for all the hard work you do every day for us. Just wanted to just say, share some thoughts, support empowering the, just as a business concept, always support empowering the lowest level individual on the team to, you know, make decisions that are that improve effect, effectuate things, make them more efficient. Just improving service and response times or requests to the residents, just in general principle. Because someone had, oh, miss. Yeah. I had mentioned about empowering the police officers. I agree. Everybody should be empowered to the lowest level possible, wherever and whenever we can do that. Traffic management devices, traffic or speed management devices at the age of seventeen or eighteen. Living in the South End of West Palm Beach, I petitioned hundreds of homes in the neighborhood behind Carvel on South Dixie and West, in the South End of West Palm Beach, from just south of Fizz Park to Hunter Road, which is basically two-thirds of that stretch from Forest Hill to Southern Boulevard, behind, on the west side of Dixie, between Dixie and the FEC tracks. And, you know, it was the best what we could do was stop signs and it was a traffic deterrent. It was a process. City of West Palm Beach has, this was, man, I'm forty-five and that was when I was eighteen. Somebody better at math and faster than me can figure that out how many years ago it was and they had a process. I petitioned, I submitted, it was reviewed through and the city of West Palm Beach made it happen. Back then it was stop signs. As you know, there's a lot of traffic calming device, things done back then in the nineties. Mayor Graham, West Palm Beach and that whole council, they did a lot in the South End. The reducing of South Olive Avenue to two lanes from four lanes. And just all around, you know, town. So there's, there's, there's a lot of, I'm sure you guys have access to those people and that information. And I would just say leverage, leverage your resources for, for that. And I think that's, just wanted to share those few thoughts and thank you for listening. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your service on the code board.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from those in attendance?
Oh, Miss Graham, good evening.
Hey, how are you, Greg? Madison Lynn Graham, seven, six, zero, six, Pine Tree Lane. In regards to the safety, the other day, my girlfriend and I were at the park with our little, her daughter. And there was, I didn't want to be prejudiced, but clearly they should not have been there. And then they started approaching us for money. Now, the police department is right there. So the enforcement, I had to call. Didn't really get a response, so then I went in. But in regards to the, just how close of a vicinity to the park, why is it not being monitored? It was daylight. It was about seven forty-three AM in the morning. And this person was littering. I mean, I did my diligence and picked up after we, you know, said, no, we don't have any cash. But safety at the park, that should be looked at heavily. I guess that's you.
Are you talking which park? Pine Tree Park?
Yes, the local park.
Well, there's.
There's a park here.
Yeah, there's four or five of them here.
Okay, the local one that's by the police department. Yeah.
Oh, well, that's this one.
Yes, exactly. The other park is a nice walk to Duncan. I go there often. Yeah, so just a heads up.
Maintenance guys at the track park, we communicate all that. I drive garbage all day, so I'm. Anytime somebody's there, I can't kick them out because they don't look like they belong.
For sure.
Yes.
But if they're approaching, yes, of course. But if they're making conversation about money.
Well, they don't ask you for money.
No, no, no. This is my statement.
Right.
And then I went to the police department and by that time they were gone. So they're quick. So we should be quicker. Well, we're here and it's just a suggestion, the park, kids, residents. Yes, yes, that's good.
But we do go there all the time.
Sure. And in regards to major issues, so I, in regards to the speeding. You guys have done your studies through these speeding signs that are monitored. What about the speeding where the areas aren't regulated? Have you looked into that? Because where I'm at, there's a stop sign and literally whenever I'm backing up, I look, I stop, I do my diligence. But in the mornings, my man has a very hard time where he'll look left, he'll look right, he'll look left. He backs up and there's a car flying at the stop sign. It's at beta. Or between alpha and beta, there's a stop sign right there. But I believe it's a lot of the residents coming from Keller. Not really sure, but that road I know is not marked in that area. It is a bit more north on the street. But in regards to like the statistics of speeding and not, of course, it's like if you're driving and you see a cop, you take your foot off, you know.
Yes.
You know, so like areas that aren't marked, what's that statistic?
We have a speed sign at both ends on both of those roads. So that's where these statistics come from.
Correct.
We don't, we have put out the traffic trails. We do that. We physically sit there and monitor in all different kinds of cars to get those statistics. So we do everything we can. The one problem is, everybody wants us somewhere else. So they always say, well, you're never here. But we are, we move around. If you have a specific problem, well, it's good to be in court, give the department. And we will sit there and I'll do the same thing. We'll count how many cars go there, through there. Most of the residents I know say, yeah, park on my driveway, it's fine. And they let us. And we park there that way. And you can see who's going there. You can physically count cars and how fast they were going.
I'd rather you guys just be discreet and them not see you and then you give them, you give them the ticket. Because it's a real big issue at the intersection, just from my observation. Okay, so I'm on seven, six, zero, six, Pine Tree. So I'm between alpha and beta. So beta, the stop sign right there. Right by my, my neighbor's, yeah, my neighbor's dad. What is that, that stop sign intersection?
Beta Court.
Beta Court, yes. It's a, yeah.
And that's in the morning, the issue, okay, we'll.
Mornings, yeah, really.
On the day shift, look at that again.
Yeah, that's so nice. I've called and that's so great. They have positive feedback. So let's make it happen. All right. I do. All right. Thank you. Good night.
Madison.
Anyone in the audience else want to come up and share their comments, thoughts? Yeah, switch the camera around. I can't see here. Someone needs to advise me. Otherwise, we'll go to Mr. Clark.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Nobody online, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any email questions ahead of time?
We've taken care of all the questions.
All right. Thank you. Going to be moving on now to status reports. But before I do, want to thank everybody for your, your audience comments and participation in this meeting. It's truly great that y'all continue to come here and share your thoughts, any of your concerns. It just can, it makes us a better council and a better town. So thank you very much for your input. All right, status reports. Let's start with the chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Last month, we did some training. We did our TASER OC spray, ass training, firearms training. One officer went for forty hours course on laser and radar speed measuring. During the department take back of prescription drugs last Saturday, we took in fifty pounds of narcotics to be disposed of. So that was good. To give you an update on the five LPR cameras, we processed ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three packs. This was the first month we didn't get any hits. A lot of times we get a lot of miscellaneous hits. Sex offenders may be driving through. Sometimes you get hits on that, people that don't have driver's license and we usually get a couple stolen ankles. But this month, there was no issue. There was one felony narcotics arrest. The individual was booked in county jail. And I think that's it unless you have any other questions.
Can you report here, chief? It says fifty-three citations issued. Is that, are those traffic citations under the crash reports and citations? And then fifty-three citations?
Issued were fifty-three. I'm glad you corrected me because I said thirty-three, so fifty-three.
Well, I wasn't going to say that I corrected you. I was just verifying that this is a correct number.
Two-thirds would be speeding and another third would be stop sign violators.
Because they do run a lot of stop signs here, by the way. Service personnel. More than residents, but service personnel. As you know, I drive around here quite a bit. I'm in and out. I'm all over. And it boggles my mind when I see service personnel in marked vehicles running stop signs. I'm like, are you crazy? But they do. So food for thought.
Any other questions for the chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I had a question about the license plate readers. Is that a real time that you get notifications? And what is the, the response time or what do you do with that information?
Well, all the cameras focus on people coming in. So instead of having ten cameras, we have five and they're expensive to maintain. So it's, it's probably, I would say, real time. I get notified. Also, some of the vehicles are set up where they would get that information.
Okay, thank you so much. And just in asking about our enforcement of that traffic box on Pine Tree and Forest Hill, I know that years ago, sometimes we'd have an officer there in the mornings to help with the comings and goings of residents. Not sure if we stop. I don't use that entrance anymore, but if you could speak to that, that would be wonderful.
When we have officers available, they'll be down there. But we have a methadone clinic and we have issues there. So we have officers there. Also, other things that are going on, also investigations. You got, you know, the IRS and feds, different things going on where we're assisting them. So when we have a vehicle available, they generally will be down because that is a a bad area as far as traffic enforcement where it backs up.
You got a lot going on and thank you for everything that you do.
I wish I could discuss how much is going on, but I can't.
Thank you, chief.
Any other councilmen have questions or comments for the chief?
Do you want me to bring mine up under my comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That would be fine.
Chief, I do have a question. You know, there was discussion about my recollection is our speed trailer doesn't really collect the type of data that these updated speed signs that we installed do. The speed signs really collect the best data. Is that, is that accurate?
That's right. This, this, the speed signs is all new computer systems, actually IA intelligence, if you even want to go that far. They, they'll do bar graphs and you can see the time of day, what time of the week, and you can direct enforcement, which we do do. They, it does a percentage and the percentage is, is that ninety percent of people comply with the speed limit. It's the ten percent that we would try to stop and cite or give a warning. But we check the percentages and, you know, a lot of times people might see somebody speeding, but they don't say anything about all the other people that may be abiding by the laws. A lot of times early in the morning, the traffic's backed up, so the speeding's not really an issue in the morning. It's more of an issue in the middle of the day and then you'll get more violators in the evening when people are coming home or cutting through.
With regard to the speed signs that, the four that you all discussed earlier, the new ones. Are those easily like movable or is it, are they like basically dug in, cemented in? Once they're in, they really need to stay where they are. So if we were going to consider putting them elsewhere, we need to get more signs.
Yes, sir. They're, they're movable and if we had, I would I wouldn't want to have to move it if we had one person complaining. But if we had a group of people or there's some concerns I would get with Dan and the utilities would move it and they could do it. And then they're reprogrammed for that location with the latitude and longitude for the GPS systems to work. And then what you can do is you can collect the database in that area. So people said they had concerns or speeding, well, we can do the database. It'll tell you how many vehicles, the average speed, the time of day, the week. A lot of times people don't know Wednesday is, was a busy day on one month where we checked. Wednesday was a heavy day for speeding compared to Monday and Tuesday and Friday.
Thank you, chief. All right. Mr. Scheck.
My report is included in your agenda packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Scheck? Just go ahead and.
Nope, doesn't seem like there are any.
I talked to Mr. Scheck, advanced of the meeting, so I'm good.
And Mr. Scheck, are you able to sit back after the meeting and meet with Ms. Brandonberg?
Yes, sir. I will be happy to do that.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that and I appreciate the work you did and looking into her issues. All right, moving on to Mr. Clark.
Happy to answer any questions on my report.
Start with Mr. Rodriguez and then work y'all's way down. Any questions for Mr. Clark?
Yes, please. Summer Fish Camp. Do we know how many anglers they're going to allow there? Is there a limit or?
Yes, it's generally limited to thirty. Sometimes, sometimes he'll open it up for a few more depending on the age of the child. But first come, first served, correct.
And the getting age of participants.
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I'll get ahold of David. I'll find out. That's good information to have in here, just so that everybody knows or we can put it out there, just so they know. And Claudine, I thought that you would be interested to know that the most unusual item collected from the late cleanup was the skeleton of an iguana. So maybe Calvin had something to do with that because your neighbor is the one who turned it in, I believe. Was that Greg Rose or Greg, not Greg? I'm thinking of Tim Rose. Greg.
Parkinson.
I'm talking about. And the, the largest item was a metal pole. That, some of the things that are in this waterway, folks, are just unbelievable. And my grandsons have been hounding me since that day, who won? Who won? Competitive and they want to know. We found a TV, we found styrofoam at the wazoo. There was just all sorts of things turned in. So for everybody who participated in the late cleanup by land and by water, thank you so much. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that's it.
Councilman Rodriguez, any questions for?
No questions. No questions.
I've already told you. Thank you very much.
I just want to note to all that there, there was mentions of this earlier, but it's in his report, the SWAG grant, where Mr. Clark and Lake Clark submitted for an application for state water quality assistance grant, one point nine million. And then there was six hundred and sixty thousand with the three nineteen H grant. And that would be for the DEP's Division of Water Restoration Assistance for the connection to individual homes. Additionally, there's been ongoing discussions with the, with Palm Beach County. And the county has around six point five million of what's called non-county wastewater projects to allocate. And we have submitted three projects. It includes Michael West, request for one point nine million. Phases three through five for the vacuum sewer system at a request of five point eight million. And the Lake Clark biomass removal at half a million. The county's requirements were that we commit a fifty percent match to any funds received, and that we're either shovel-ready or near shovel-ready. And Mr. Clark is of the opinion that the town can be shovel-ready or near shovel-ready on items two and three, which would be phases three through five of the sewer system, vacuum sewer system, and the biomass removal by September twenty twenty-three, if we stay on our current course. We do continue to pursue to get his report, monitor the water bond situation, see if and when monies might become available to the town in that regard. So, thank you very much, Mr. Clark, for continuing to pursue all these avenues for funding for our town to improve our infrastructure and water, water quality. All right. Is Bill Lynch? Bill, are you here in the meeting virtually or otherwise?
Bill was here virtually. He had another appointment at eight o'clock.
Okay, not a problem. We'll move on to council comments, and we'll start with Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you very much for everybody that showed up, both in person and online. I hear you. I, I think, you know, all the points that you brought up are extremely important. You know, we're very fortunate, and I keep saying this again and again. We're so, so incredibly fortunate to be living in our wonderful slice of paradise. This is an incredible neighborhood made up of incredible people. And we're lucky that our biggest thing is discussing money, right? We're lucky that we don't have high rates of crime or high rates of burglaries or, or other horrible things that other cities or towns have to deal with across the United States. And so, that's, that's a good thing. That's a solvable, workable problem. I just wanted to, to say thank you for all the comments. Howard, for, for bringing up some of the issues of, of each home and, and the connections to, to the sewer system. I understand that expenditures here in the town are important, that we look at and we closely monitor. You know, the water quality, I've, I've heard lots of folks talk about the water quality and, and, you know, the septic system and that. You know, we're asking very hard, difficult questions sometimes. And I think that that is good because the more that we understand, the better off we all are. So, I wanted to say thank you very much, you know, Ms. Janowski. Thank you for, for bringing up some points and doing your diligence and asking questions of the DEP. And I heard you about the dog poop, and I share your, I share your sentiment. It's not very nice when people leave their bags either out in the open or in my empty garage, I empty garbage can. Joe, I, I heard you about the, the taxes and, you know, I, I just, I believe if that were to be the case, if I think that that would be a non-ad valorem taxes, from what I understand. It's not ad valorem, it's non-ad valorem. I didn't see that in the report, but I just wanted to make sure that that was, was clear. I'm going to let Mr. Shaw who talk about the barbecue because I'm very excited about it. I know that he is too. But I just want a big round of applause to the, the staff for transitioning our utility system, the payment system over to a new system. So, if you haven't already, please make sure that you register for the auto pay. I had to redo it so that your utility bill, if it's on auto pay, that it continues to get paid. So, that's kind of important. Claudine, you know, we had a really nice conversation about landscaping, and you have done a beautiful job at your home. And I think it's really important that you suggested that we kind of, you know, maybe even on a lot of communities have beach cleanups, or maybe we should have a pine tree and, and Westlake cleanup, you know, do that, that three-mile loop and maybe some of the runners and walkers, you know, when we're out and we see some trash, might not be a bad idea to, to pick that up. And lastly, Ms. Brandonberg, I, I know that you've been going through heck. And, and I hear you. I understand. And hopefully, we can bring some closure to that this evening. All right. And last and final thought, I have some more of these reflective things. Make sure if you go walking, dusk or dawn are the worst times. Safety-wise to go walking. So, if you are, please make sure you're wearing bright clothes, light clothes, and reflective stuff. Remember that the headlights, if you put anything reflective above the waist, it's difficult to see. Keep some of the reflective stuff on the bottom. Your headlights from your vehicle are actually aimed kind of thigh to ankle high. So, they go from about the thigh to the ankle. Keep that in mind. If you want any of these, there, I'll just put them right here, and you guys can help yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Sheldon?
We're having a barbecue this weekend, so we're looking forward to getting back to normal, as they say. We need all hands on deck, as they say, Saturday morning, bright and early. So, as soon as you get up, I'm sure we'll have coffee available because Paul and I are going to be here about five thirty, six o'clock. That's when we're going to put about over one thousand pounds of meat on the cookers. And we're going to crank it up and, and get ready for a fantastic event. We anticipate over a thousand of your closest friends to be in attendance. We're going to start serving food at eleven thirty on Sunday. But we need everybody here first thing in the morning on Saturday, and then in the afternoon on Saturday to turn all of that thousand pounds of pork into some delicious cold pork. So, we need your, we need your help. We really do. And I want to say thank you so much for the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Union for their generous donation. Bill Murphy, are you here still? Bill Murphy is a retired firefighter, and he's, he, he's just a super duper volunteer. And I just wanted to thank him for his individual efforts. Wanted to show you. What did I do? Oh, come on. Okay. When I was out and about campaigning, it was brought to my attention that the handicap swings in the park were broken. And they said, why can't we have the handicap swings reinstall? So, I said, you got it. I'll look into it. And this is what, I reached out to the, to the neighbor, and I said, the handicap swings are in. We have a small and large. And so, she immediately that afternoon sent me this picture, and I asked her if I could share it with everyone. So, I want you to see that we're trying to take care of everyone's needs in the community. I also advise the Mr. Clark in my conversations with our lobbyist in Tallahassee that there are, there's some dollars that are available for handicap equipment, not handicap accessible, but handicap equipment, and we're looking into that. Also, want to thank Officer Manik. In April of this year, he represented Lake Clark Shores Police Department at the Florida Law Enforcement Memorial to honor those that died in the line of duty. So, this is our Officer Manik. You want to come on in and say hi? Tallahassee representing the town on his expense in his own time. So, we're trying to be as fruitful, fruitful, dutiful. We're trying to be very diligent in the, in the spending of our dollars here in town. Officer Manik, thank you so very, very much. Also, I want you to know on May the first, Officer Sergeant Howell and Officer Manik and Officer Pulis responded to an emergency call, and they found two females unconscious. They administered first aid and CPR and realized that they obviously were in distress. It was a drug overdose. CPR was performed. And as a result of Officer Pulis administered Narcan to the patients, and they regained consciousness and to breathe on their own. And if they had not received the training and the the supervision that our police chief and Sal do with the police officers, probably not would have, we probably would have had a different outcome. So, on these two, these three police officers saved two lives on this past week ago. So, again, congratulations. You deserve the recognition for your actions, and we commend them for not only saving lives, but for representing the town of Lake Clark Shores and your profession admirably. So, hats off to you, sir. Tallahassee photo, got this. Mr. Clark, want you to know, y'all, you should know, there are a lot of kudos that being addressed to Mr. Clark. Mr. Clark received the hometown hero award from the Florida League of Cities for the fourth year in a row. So, that's advocating for home rule. That's advocating for standing up for our rights. And I just want you to know, it's almost unheard of to have the hometown hero award awarded four years in a row to Dan Clark, our town administrator. Colleen Burdick, God bless her. She's been a public servant for many, many years. I know your family well, and always a positive influence in our community. So, thank you for coming to us. And I'm sure if you talk to the police chief, I, I hope your issue becomes. But I will tell you this, this is some crazy stuff. Remember, she told you about the turkey watch and all this stuff? The, we were talking at lunch today about unbelievable issues. The Florida Legislature, and help me out here, Dan, passed a, the no smoking in public parks. Wasn't that a great thing? And where, you know, we, they just basically say you can't smoke in the beaches, can't smoke on the public parks. And we're going to keep our environment nice and clean. Got it? You agree with it? And why do you think you can smoke a cigar?
No filter.
No, maybe somebody who sponsored the legislation likes to.
Well, I wasn't going to throw a hard one, but there is no.
Isn't that something? I'm sitting here going. Only, only in Tallahassee. I don't know. But, you know, you're right, Paulette, that, that Lake Clark Shores is, is a very conservative oriented community. But we must also appreciate the fact that there were no dollars for the veto of the, in the budget for Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach. They got the, they got the worst end of the, of the line item. So, so, we're doing the best we can, but we, the six hundred thousand dollars that Mayor Shaw who, boy, that sounds interesting. That's still in the budget. Thank goodness. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Blue Way Trail is, is still in the budget. And our annexation is going forward.
The, the commissioner is right, though. It, it would help to have some phone calls up to the governor's office saying, we, we have this challenge. Please help us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez.
By the way, it's so nice to have you here, Paulette. You probably don't remember things, but I, I dragged you out to Okeechobee Park six years ago to help get funding for my son's baseball team. And you met me out there, and you, you did some really good things because I felt like this was an underfunded park. And you were on top of things. And that was, it was a, it was nice to know that someone was willing to just have a resident call them up and say, hey, could you come out and meet? And that's what we all like to do up here, but obviously, we can't. Yours is on a much different level. I want to remind everybody, on July first, will be our sixty-fifth anniversary. I'm in charge of this sixty-fifth anniversary book that I'm putting together. We were officially July first, nineteen fifty-seven. Our authority, our state charter was granted, and aldermen became councilmen. And we had about twelve hundred residents here, which is actually quite a bit. Forest Hill was a two-lane road. And Forest Hill High School was opened the next year, nineteen fifty-eight. These are some of the things you're going to learn in this book. We, we had barbecues back then, but nothing like the barbecue that Bob started many years ago. All around town, there was a guy named Lake Lidle who loved to take his boat out on the lake before the town was even chartered. There's a lot of interesting stories about him. There's just many neat things that our town has done. So, what we're going to do is for the sixty-fifth, we're going to try to gather these facts back. So, all of you who are, who've not been here for a long time can kind of know. And one of the goals I have is figure out who's been here how long. Okay? And, and it's a, it's a tough one because we're trying to get property appraiser records and tax collector records, but they're not really accurate. So, we're working on that. A lot of people have passed away in the last fifteen years since we did our thirtieth anniversary book. I don't know if anybody remembers, but we had a big thirtieth, or fiftieth anniversary book, excuse me, in, in two thousand and seven. It was a big party. We had a party all the way down the street. It, it was like a year of festivities. It was really great. I had just become a council member then. Greg, you had just become a council member. Bob had always been a council member. And Bobby, you weren't born. Bobby wasn't born yet.
Thank you, Val.
You're welcome. Just, you know, be happy about that comment. So, if I, I'm, I'm asking for some help at the town picnic. I'm going to try to see if I can hand out some things, some information on how long people have been here. I'm going to get people fill out surveys, figure out when you moved in, your family, just so we can get the statistic together. I think everybody needs to know that. I think we need to know a little about, about the history of our town. Like movie night, when did that start? When did the fishing tournament start? When did the barbecue start?
Fishing tournament started at the fiftieth anniversary.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. You, you know, you know your stats. And, and the year before.
He was the chair.
When did we do community policing? When did we have golf carts?
Started that too.
You started community policing. I did golf cart.
With the chief, so. Yes, sir.
So, we've got a bunch of projects that we want to put in a timeline so everybody can know all the neat things that have gone on in our town. When I came here in two thousand and six as council member, I'd been here for many years before. My motto was families are the main focus of the town, and there was an article written up. And at the time, I had five kids, and they were all really small. Now, they're all big. And, you know, time flies after fifteen years. But I'd like to know, like, how many kids we have in town now, because it feels like there's a lot more. I feel like we've become a much younger town. When I got on council, I felt like the average age here was sixty. I feel like the average age is now probably forty-five. I think we've come down in ages of town. The average price of houses have gone up. I think that would be a nice statistic to have in the book. We have our first million-dollar-plus sales in the last two or three years, which are amazing for a little town like us to have that. You know, we've, we've, we've made a lot of progress. So, the only thing I'm telling you this is I'm trying to put together stats so that you'll know where we were in nineteen fifty-seven, when we were this little teeny town, and where we are sixty-five years later. Yes?
I know it's not proper to say anything at this moment, but it might be really cool to do in the book of then and now. Like, my, my family's lived here since, I don't know, nineteen sixty-seven.
Yeah, so we need to know that.
Kind of like if you did maybe an email where people could send in photos of like, how the stop sign looked and how the corner looked.
Yes. And what's nice is our fiftieth anniversary book that was put together by Fran Carlton, she had a lot of the old pictures. And then she put pictures from two thousand and five and six. And then we're going to update, you know, to present and try to make this into something where you can see a progression of a town where, where things have changed a lot.
Like, I have photos of when I was eight, in the house, in the house that I'm living in. So, it might be cool to have.
That, see, that's exactly what.
I'm very into that, sorry.
So, that, no, I know. And that's what the sixty-fifth anniversary celebration's about, is to show continuity of people living here, whether you're new or you've been here for nineteen sixty-seven, before I was born. My house, the house I live in was built in sixty- My house, the house I live in was built in 67 too. So it was one of the few first houses there. And it was just amazing to know the history of your own house and how it came about. And then how the town and how we went from four lanes. Did you know, by the way, that some residents wanted to put gas stations in their property, not on Forest Hill? I mean, then that created something called zoning. And we finally passed zoning laws here. We passed a lot of laws that came about as a result of becoming a bigger community. The only reason I say that is anyone who's willing in the audience who wants to help gather information. We're going to ha- hand out a piece of paper to try to get some facts together, collect pictures. This book won't be done probably real, in reality, till the end of the year, but our goal is to get it ready for this year. We want a big sign up. And, and Dan, maybe you can, I can do this. I know we only have a couple of days. 65th anniversary, ask for input from people. Because I don't think a lot of people know that this is our 65th anniversary. And 50th was big because 50 is 50, but 65 is, you know, it's a retirement year, right? Right, Dan? And you're never retired. Yeah, Dan, by the way, there's a great Eagles song about you. It's called Hotel California. You can check out. But you can never leave. Sorry, Dan, you're stuck. That's all I wanted to say. It's going to be a great picnic. I appreciate what everyone's done to put it together. I'm going to be doing kids events because that's what I did from the very beginning. And we're, we're going to have a lot of fun and make it very positive. The theme is gathering together as friends and family. It's our 65th anniversary and there's going to be an amazing food. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be there before tennis.
He said 6:00 AM.
I beat that before tennis.
Okay, good.
That you're, you're going forward.
We're good. All right, Mr. Mayor. Bad and clean up.
Bye, President. Oh, Tim, yeah, you're up, Mr. Freeble.
Everybody take a deep breath. We're glad you're here, really. It's very contentious what's going on. Since I've been on this council, Bob and Val were both on here. We've done nothing but trim costs. Nothing. We took the council meetings down to one meeting a month. We no longer had the engineer here. We looked at installing our own gas. We couldn't even get gas at a hurricane for our police department vehicles at the time. I don't know if you remember that, Chief. But remember, we had to go running to get it. So we've done a lot of things. The vehicles is cost savings. You may not see it, but it really is. And, and they demonstrated it to us very clearly. So that's why I'm glad everybody's here at these meetings. The more you attend these meetings, the more you'll see what's going on. We bring in these professionals who know what they're doing when they tell us these things. So we've trimmed costs. I can't believe for my own sake that can't see in 2004, three, whatever it was, when the other council was vetting this septic to sewer. They were at 9,000. Now we're in between 20, 25,000, whatever numbers you want to throw out there. Inflation, guess what? It's going up. It's not going to stop. We have to figure something out. There's a podcast, I've been repeating a lot of stuff. Tallahassee takeover. Don't think they can't come in here and tell you they're already doing it. Why do you think Mr. Clark is four years in a row, the home rule hero? Because we're up there fighting to keep our home rule. That's what we want. That's what we do here. If they come in here and they start dictating to us, it's a problem for a small community. And guess what? You know, the county would gobble you up in a heartbeat. They would love to. It could be disastrous. It could be a good thing. Just like getting rid of the police department, which I would never advocate for. So we really like it when everybody's here. Bring your ideas to the table. Let's talk. I'm looking through these reports and reading them. There's things that they're still reviewing to find the best cost. And don't forget, low bid is not always the best. That's why there's some problems in this town hall with air conditioning systems that create mold for employees. And we have to do something about that. We can't just sit back and let this continue to happen. So we have to be proactive, not reactive. And that's going to be our stance. So I hope everybody here continues to come to these meetings. You will never be silenced. We had one resident come on daily, you guys talking and you're mad at me. We're not mad at anybody. We're all residents here. We all love this place. Don't forget it. And every council member up here has the same responsibility to pay this bill for this conversion as everybody sitting in, in this audience. So we are taking this very seriously. We take our job very seriously up here. It's very hard for six council members to go to Tallahassee and lobby our senators, our representatives and go to the governor's office, which we've done and I've done in regards to this issue. So we have the best interest of Lake Clark Shores at heart. We feel like we're saving money. Sometimes some of you may feel like it's not a savings, but we can demonstrate that it is. And we don't just jump into this and say, okay, some of these things take months. So on the other side of that, I got distracted, but April was driver distracted month. Please don't text survive, everybody. There is an issue with the traffic around here. It's not a responsibility of the police department. I see those guys all the time. They're all around. They're, they're, and a lot of that traffic does come from points beyond here. That's never going to stop. We're not an isolated neighborhood here. So stay aware, be aware. We had the fishing tournament. It was a great success. We put this together quickly. There were 13 boats. I never did get the final results, but the big fish, I think was close to seven pounds. Everybody had a good time. There was four or five sponsors that came through. A bunch of people donated items for giveaways. It was very well attended. Paulette, I want to thank you for your service to the school board and the county commission. We've attended many meetings over there and watched you at work. I know your stance. I know your position. It's admirable. Thank you very much. It's nice to see you. Did you sell your house over there? And I saw that it was for sale at one point. Very nice. You've got, while the getting was good, right?
I did now have a wonderful motorhome that I drive.
We're jealous. We're all jealous.
We can't.
The day will come. I'm, I'm counting the days, believe me. So continue to come to the meetings, continue to tell us how you feel, what you're thinking. Any ideas that are on the table, any options that we have to look at. We're not perfect up here, but we are willing to explore every avenue. And I can speak for every council member up here because I know that they are too. And we take our job very seriously and we've been very dedicated to it throughout all of these years. So have a great Memorial Day, everybody. We'll see you at the barbecue. Come out, enjoy, see your neighbors, have fun. Take it all in. It's as big as it seems. Count all your blessings. Remember your dreams. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well said, everyone. A couple of things real quickly. So there were some comments made earlier by Mr. Tim Daughtry. You know, that the town council and town staff need to be, need to get costs under control. You know, I, my opinion on that is we need to continue doing the great job that we're doing, keeping our costs well under control. You know, the purchase of new vehicles is through the, through the lease program has yielded significant savings to the town. I think that's important to recognize, you know, so far to date, I think it's somewhere around $40,000 estimated that we've been saving. Could be mistaken on that number. Dan, is that accurate?
The original plan that we put in place was a 10 year plan that saved us $400,000. It varies year by year based on the number of vehicles we get that particular year. But in general, we're, we're projecting 40,000 a year for 10 years.
Thank you. And then we also hired ABM and contracted with them a number of years ago to update this, the AC units and a bunch of other stuff throughout the town to basically save on some costs. And we've already saved over $10,562 in energy upgrades from 2019 and 2020. And provided an annual operational savings of $21,959. The benefit of, of these agreements that we've been able to broker and, and reach is that we're improving the town, whether it's the vehicles or the infrastructure for the town hall, the landscaping, et cetera. The services being provided, all while actually getting a cost savings, a significant cost savings to the town. So I want to remind everybody that we are well aware of what, what's being spent and where money needs to be saved. And each year we are looking for ways to save money, but not lessen the services in any way that the town can provide and that the town needs as far as upkeep and maintenance. Again, congratulations, Dan, on the four years in a row for the home rule hero. It's quite impressive. I don't know of anyone else that has that can claim four in a row. So thank you again very much for all that you continue to do for our town. It is late. I really appreciate everyone's participation. I ask that if you have any questions or concerns about the ongoing sewer project or anything going on with the town, don't just discuss it among yourselves, but when you're done discussing it amongst yourself or even before, bring it to one of our attention. Contact any of the council members, contact Mr. Clark, contact town staff. Make sure you have a way to have your voice heard and get accurate information from those within the town, because that's really where the accurate information is going to come from. We have well-trained experts in multiple fields, looking at all avenues from financing to engineering to construction. And it's important, you know, that we recognize that this isn't just being done, you know, rolling the dice and closing our eyes. We have had multiple residents already communicate, not only with town staff, but council members as well as our engineers to get a better understanding and have their questions directly answered. And that has been, from what I understand from the feedback from those residents, it's been very useful. And they certainly have better understandings because some of them are asking very technical questions on an engineer or construction level. And they're able to get those type of answers from our consultants and engineers. So again, if you have any questions or concerns, or you think the information we provided or we're being provided is inaccurate in any way, contact the town. Ask to say, hey, can I have a sit down? Let's figure this out. You know, I mentioned the, the resident earlier, you know, or sorry, Tony, I look forward to speaking with him on Sunday and saying, hey, listen, how'd you come up with your stuff? And let's get you face to face with the people who are preparing our financial consultant recommendations and see what's going on. Maybe someone's missing something somewhere, but nobody will know if you're not going straight to the source. So I certainly welcome the ongoing discussion, the critical analysis that a lot of y'all continue to do and have been doing. And truly appreciate it. It's a team effort and look forward to seeing you guys at the next meeting, but more importantly, at the town barbecue on Sunday. So take care, everybody. Have a great rest of the week. Take a motion or adjourn. Is there a second?
Yep.
All in favor? All right. Thank you all very much.